Good evening. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Cattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Cattati Community Redevelopment Agency. And we'll start with a roll call, please.
Councilmember Savage?
Here.
Councilmember Sparks?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lemus?
Here.
Mayor Ford?
Here. Thanks. So that takes us to approval of minutes and notice of waiving of reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda. We have one set of minutes. It's the regular meeting of August 26th. Did any council members see anything that needed changing? Okay, we'll go to public comment on the minute of August 26th. Anybody in the chambers have comments on the minutes? All right, let's check with Zoom.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment on approval of the minutes, please use the raise hand icon. Seeing no hands, Mayor Ford, that will end the public comment.
All right, thank you. So back to council, anybody like to make a motion?
Move to approve the August 26th minutes.
Second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries five zero. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to proclamations, and we have two proclamations on the agenda tonight. I'm going to take our public comment on the proclamations at the beginning. So anybody who's here, there are some people here to receive the proclamations, and they'll have a brief chance to speak at that point. Public comment for both proclamations is at this point. So anybody have any public comment on either of the proclamations before us, which are the Latino Heritage Month and Creek Week proclamations? Check in the room first. Okay, let's check with Zoom.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Once again, Zoom attendees, if you would like to make a public comment on the proclamations, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Ford, that will end the public comment.
Okay, thanks. So our first proclamation is for Latino Heritage Month, and Vice Mayor Lemus will present that proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I stand here today in my blusa de gala, which is a gala blouse, which is made by Artisan Hands and handmade from Oaxaca, Mexico. So if you can see my blouse, it's beautifully all embroidered, embroidered, handmade. So I just want to say that I'm glad that we're recognizing Latino Heritage Month, especially in this really difficult time where, you know, I'm a brown woman, I speak Spanish, I'm of Mexican heritage, and that alone, you know, carries a lot of uncertainty in these times for myself and people like me. So I just want to share that first and just say that I stand here proudly as a brown woman, a woman of Mexican heritage, a woman that speaks Spanish. And I'm here as a representative of my community, and I'm proud to present this proclamation today. So I'm going to give the proclamation, and I do have two students from our Ranch of Cattati High School from the Mecha Club. And so I'm hoping that they can, after I read the proclamation, if you want to come and share some words with us, including invitation to your event that you have coming up in a few weeks, okay? So I'll read the proclamation. Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Cattati proclaiming September 15th to October 15th, 2025, as Latino Heritage Month, whereas every year, the federal, state, and many local governments observe Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th to October 15th by recognizing and celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens and residents whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and Southern America. And whereas September 15th is significant as a starting date for Latino Heritage Month because it is the anniversary of independence for the Latino-American countries of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence of September 16th and September 18th respectively. And Dia de la Raza, which is October 12th, falls within this 30-day period. And whereas the observation started in 1968 as Latino Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15th and ending on October 15th. Each successive president has called upon the people of our country to observe this month with appropriate respect, ceremonies, and activities. And whereas Hispanics and Latinos have made immeasurable contributions to our culture and economy and have been integral to the prosperity and enrichment of Cattati, Sonoma County, and the United States. Whereas in the city of Cattati, Hispanic and Latino community members, business owners, residents, and students continue to foster the culture and tradition as a whole while also advocating and ensuring a voice on behalf of the Hispanic and Latino community with recent focus on immigration, education, health, wellness, financial stability, economic and civic engagement, and social justice. And whereas Hispanics and Latinos continue to enrich our nation's character and contribute to our common future. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month also allows us to honor and celebrate the key leadership roles and accomplishments of all Hispanics and Latino in our community and our shared values. Now, therefore be it proclaimed on this day of September 9th, 2025, by the City Council of the City of Cattati, that September 15th to October 15th, 2025, is Hispanic Heritage Month, and the City Council encourages all residents to recognize their significant and continuing contribution to our shared culture and continuing prosperity. Now, I want to invite some students from a local high school, and these students are the president of the Mecha Club at the Ranch of Cattati High School, Miguel Cruz, if you can come forward, and also Betzabel Corcina, who is a volunteer coordinator for the Mecha Club at Ranch of Cattati High School. Can you both come up and share a few words? So glad to have you here.
Hello, everyone. My name is Betzabel Corcina, and I am the volunteer coordinator of Mecha Club. I'm here on the behalf of Mecha Club Ranch of Cattati High School. We're a student group that celebrates Latino, Chicano, and Indigenous culture, promotes leadership, and encourages us to stay proud of who we are.
Hi there. My name is Miguel Cruz. I'm the Mecha president for Ranch of Cattati, here presenting, representing Ranch of Cattati. So our event that's going to come up on September 20th is La Fiesta de Independencia, called El Grito. On Ranch of Cattati, the campus, we're going to be encouraging a lot of heritage. We will be holding many vendors, many events in that small event itself, and a car show. And it has invited everyone in the community and everyone.
Thank you.
What are the times?
It'll start from 2:00 PM and end around 8:00.
Thank you for sharing that. I've been every year, and this year unfortunately I won't be here, so I'm hoping that one of my fellow council members will be able to attend.
We'd be honored to have you guys there. Thank you.
Thank you. And now is it okay we take a picture with you too?
Of course.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. You can see my screen, right? Definitely. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for having us. Thank you. Thank you so much. First, thank you.
Also in honor of Latino Heritage Month, I did bring some pan dulce, Mexican bread in the back, so go ahead and help yourself. It's in the back, there's conchitas, little shells. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lemus. So our next proclamation recognizes Creek Week, and Cattati has a long history of volunteer care for our waterways, and I've invited a longtime leader of that effort, Jenny Blaker, and a person who I hear is out there almost every day caring for the creek, Paul Burke. So I'd like, come on up and up to the podium while I read the proclamation, then I'll invite you to say a few words. So this is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Cattati proclaiming the week of September 15th to 21st, 2025, as Pollution Prevention Week and September 22 to 28 as Creek Week in the Russian River watershed. Whereas throughout the United States, the week starting on the third Monday of September is recognized as National Pollution Prevention Week. And whereas throughout much of California, including the Russian River watershed, cities, counties, and other stewardship organizations are recognizing the fourth week of September as Creek Week. And whereas our pollution prevention practices are intrinsically linked to the health of our watershed lands and waterways. And whereas the Russian River Watershed Association supports programs to reduce pollution, increase the environmental quality of our watershed, and provide our communities with the knowledge to be effective stewards of the Russian River watershed lands and waterways. And whereas the nearly 1,500 square miles of lands, 150 creeks, and approximately 360,000 residents of the Russian River watershed are connected and mutually support each other. And whereas the Russian River, along with its tributaries and associated features, are important resources to the people of Sonoma and Mendocino Counties. And whereas pollution in the form of trash and debris, chemicals from industry and everyday living, and sediment from construction and many land uses and activities, all have the potential to degrade the quality of life and the quality of resources within the Russian River watershed. And whereas the Russian River Watershed Association strives to protect our lands and waterways through ongoing pollution prevention outreach, which aims to raise awareness of the harmful effects of pollutants to our natural systems. And whereas during Pollution Prevention Week and Creek Week, creek, river, and ocean cleanup campaigns will take place throughout Sonoma and Mendocino Counties, including our annual creek cleanup and first invasive species removal event in the Laguna de Santa Rosa on September 20th, 2025. Now therefore be it proclaimed on this day of September 9th, 2025, by the City Council of the City of Cattati, that September 15th to 21st, 2025, is Pollution Prevention Week and September 22 to 28, 2025, is Creek Week in the Russian River watershed, and asks all members of our community to support efforts to protect and enrich our watershed health by participating in the many Pollution Prevention Week Creek Week activities, including the City of Cattati Creek Cleanup and Invasive Species Removal on September 20th, and to take active steps to reduce pollution and care for our environment throughout the year. All right, so I'd like to invite the two of you to say a few words, and then we'll invite everybody up for a picture.
Hi, I'm Paul Burke, and I'm a resident of Cattati for 36 years now, and I was lucky enough to purchase a home, my wife and I, back, anyway, we're right along, we're right, our yard backs up against the Laguna, so we've been there, and I've watched the Laguna and watched the Laguna for years. And probably about four or five years ago, it started really falling into disrepair. We had a lot of homeless that were living on the creek, and they made quite the mess. So anyway, I walk every morning, and I just get madder and madder and madder, and it was like, okay, I gotta stop being so mad when I walk, so I just decided to start cleaning it up. And it took about three weeks the first time, and 18 bags of big bags of garbage to get it out of there. And it's, I put some garbage cans on the path and stuff, and it's, and it should stay much cleaner now. I mean, but it's still, you know, there's still problems, and now that they drained it, you know, you can see a lot of the stuff that was down there, and so you can get it off the creek bed, you know? But I'm not, I'm no hero. I'm just trying to keep myself less angry, that's all. So, but I'm glad that we're gonna do, you know, we're gonna do some repairs on there and stuff.
Okay.
Like, if we could get garbage service there would be really good, you know, just two cans, and, you know, even like once a month would, you know, a pickup would be great. And I know they are, they are picking it up over at the park there, and, which is good, so I usually will dump some stuff, but I usually take the stuff to dump myself. And so, anyway, anyway, I'm, I love Cattati. I think you guys are doing a beautiful job downtown. The whole town looks great.
Great. Thank you so much. So you think we'll still be able to find something to do on September 20th?
Oh, yeah.
You haven't done everything?
I'm tackling the graffiti now.
All right, great.
They do it in the afternoon, and I get in in the morning, and so.
Thank you.
I've still got purpose, so.
All right, Jenny.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and Paul. Over the last several months, a group of us, I think we've just come up with a name, Cattati Friends of the Laguna, have been discussing how the community could work collaboratively with the city to reduce pollution and improve the health of the Laguna in Cattati. I'd like to thank the people who've been involved. Councilmember John Savage, John Del Osso, who is Chair of the Board of the Laguna Foundation, Maria Alvarez, who's been involved since the mid 1990s, when she was a member of Cattati's Community and Environment Commission, Ashwariya of the Sandy Loom Project, and Yuka Metegi, who will be helping us expand public outreach for our social media. Sadly, most of them aren't available tonight. I'd also like to thank very much Craig Scott, Director of Public Works and the City Manager, for their collaboration. And very special gratitude and thanks to Paul Burke, who has independently been an incredibly successful one-man team, collecting and emptying trash cans along the trail downstream of East Cattati Avenue, and tackling the graffiti on the fences, which is a problem there. And I'd like to thank the Laguna supporters who are here tonight in the audience and have been involved in various ways over the years. The Laguna de Santa Rosa is a freshwater wetland complex and the largest tributary to the Russian River. Its main channel starts just south of Cattati and runs 22 miles to Forestville, where it flows into the Russian River to enter the Pacific Ocean near Jenna. The Laguna de Santa Rosa is an important wildlife area and was recognized as a wetland of international significance in 2011. Here in Cattati, we live close to the beginning of the Laguna, so everything we do here, whether it's polluting or cleaning up and protecting our waterways, has an impact downstream into the rest of the Laguna, the Russian River, and even out to the Pacific Ocean. That is why Pollution Prevention Week and Creek Week matter here in Cattati specifically. Because we live upstream, we have a responsibility to take care of the Laguna, which also provides a lot of benefits to residents who regularly enjoy the trail and the shade from the trees, which were mostly planted by volunteers about 20 years ago. Looking back, some residents will remember that Cattati Creek Critter volunteers planted and took care of 2,000 native trees and shrubs along a mile of the Laguna Channel between about 2005 to '12. Now, Cattati Friends of the Laguna would like to work with the city to promote and support the long-term care of the Laguna in Cattati, including regular trash removal, sensitive targeted removal of specific invasive species, and the protection of appropriate native riparian vegetation, which helps shade the water in the channel and provides habitats for birds and animals. One of the very successful plants is basket sedge, which is spreading beautifully and which stays green year-round. We'd like to include things like updating interpretive signs, providing benches in the shade, and downstream of East Cattati, Paul has been talking about a blitz on the graffiti on the fences, which is a problem there. Last November, the Cattati Historical Society hosted an event called Celebrating the Laguna. We created an exhibit about the Laguna in Cattati, which is still in the museum now and open for viewing whenever the museum is open, currently Saturday afternoons from 1:00 to 4:00, at least until the end of the year. Looking forward, there will be many and varied opportunities for volunteering. The teachers at Sandy Loom and Rainbow Bridge Montessori School want to be involved. The teachers and students at the University Elementary at La Fiesta School near Ladybug Park are already involved and regularly use the Laguna as an outdoor classroom. In the past, many students from SSU and the JC were involved with Cattati Creek Critters and could be again in the future. So we look forward to welcoming volunteers on September 20th, and we're also looking for a smaller number of volunteers who can join us on the 13th to do some advanced preparation and training to guide volunteers on the 20th with the habitat restoration. This will benefit all of the users of the Laguna, human and non-human, here in Cattati, and be a way to contribute to the larger Laguna de Santa Rosa and Russian River watersheds. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jenny and Paul, and all the supporters who are here. Don't sit down, because we're gonna take a picture with everybody. But I'm excited to see this upswelling of support for getting more involved with the Laguna. And I will say, I was one of those volunteers who planted some of those trees, and it's a great feeling to walk down the Laguna and remember planting a tree that's now 30 feet tall. So we're gonna come up and invite everybody who's here for this proclamation to come All right, our next, thank you all, and you are welcome to stick around, but it's okay if you go too. We understand. So our next agenda item is agenda review, and first I'm just gonna ask, are there any proposed changes?
No, Mayor, no proposed changes tonight.
Okay, and we do have somebody on Zoom who has their hand up, I believe, to speak on this item, so we'll open public comment on the agenda review. Go to Zoom first.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Once again, Zoom attendees, please use the raise hand icon to make a public comment on this item. The first hand is from Lori Alderman. You have the floor.
Sorry about that. I went to do citizen comment next.
Okay, thanks. Anybody in the chambers, sorry, no more Zoom hands, hi? For the agenda.
That was the only hand on Zoom.
Okay, we'll check in the chamber, see if anybody has public comment on the agenda review. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, councilmembers. First, thank everybody for the Laguna. Bravo. I live on the path behind Laguna. I didn't know where the trash comes out, but now I do. Thank you so much. Also for you guys and all the council members, I've been here 36 years. You guys have done a fantastic job, excuse me, in the city of Cattati, and happy to be living here with you guys. One question, just I want to find out what's going on with the hotel site up there?
So this is public comment on our agenda for tonight.
Oh, okay.
The next item is citizen business, where, I mean, you can talk about whatever you want. I'm gonna let you go ahead and speak now.
Okay.
But we don't, we can't do a back and forth during your time.
Okay.
So you can, you can say your piece, and then we'll answer any questions that come up.
That's perfect. No.
Go right ahead.
That's in my piece. I want that.
Okay, thanks.
I just want to thank you guys. You're doing a great job.
Yeah, thanks.
Should I talk to planning about that?
Well, well, actually, at the end of citizen business, we will actually get a brief report about that, so don't leave.
Once again, thank all you guys. Thank you, guys. Bravo.
Thank you. All right, anything more on the agenda review? Okay, we'll close that public comment. We didn't have any proposed changes, so we move straight on to citizen business and public comment for consent calendar items. So this is the time when any member of the public is welcome to speak on any matter that's not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council, or on any of the items on the consent calendar, and there are four items on there tonight. So you can have up to three minutes for items not on the agenda, and also an additional three minutes to speak to any and all items on the consent calendar. And so I will start with Zoom with this one, because we know we have a speaker there.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Ford. Once again, Zoom attendees, use the raise hand icon to make a public comment. Just one note for our Zoom attendees, it appears that our timer overlay is not working, so I will give a 30-second warning when there are 30 seconds left on the timer. Thank you. The first hand is from Lori Alderman. You have the floor.
I wanted to break down some of the costs for the code enforcement scandal and the persecution of George Barrick. These are just the totals for the last month. It's not even quite a month. Just in hearing time, we have had 28 hours of testimony in the last month. This does not include prep time costs for anyone. Costs. Administrative law judge Gary Weiner, 28 hours times $550 an hour equals $15,400. Robert Smith, code enforcement, 28 hours at $150 an hour equals $4,200. Robert Smith has been at all the hearings on Zoom, assuming that he is charging the city for this time. Steve Ngo of Redwood Public Law, assuming that he is billing the city at the charge it would be recoverable in court for a senior counsel in a law firm, that would be a low amount for $400. 28 hours times $400 equals $11,200. Redwood Public Law, paralegal. Average California pay rate for paralegal is $40 an hour per salary.com. 28 hours times $40 an hour equals $1,100. John Baker or other attorney, there was another attorney at one time, at Redwood Public Law to be at the Zoom meeting. Assuming a low recoverable rate of $300 an hour in court, 28 hours times $300 an hour equals $8,400. Then we have poor Kevin here, who's had to run the Zoom meeting and provide for my ADA accommodations. 28 hours times $43 an hour equals $1,204. This total, $41,524 for all estimated recoverable costs to the city of Cattati for just these 28 hours of hearings in the last month. The code enforcement budget for '25, '26 is $38,000. The city is already over budgeted just by the hours spent on the hearings, 28, these 28 hours. No wonder there are no monies available for code enforcement in Cattati or for things like code enforcement at the Cattati Hotel, when the city of Cattati is spending upwards of $41,000 a month on persecuting one man. I wanted to also bring, tell the code. One, Section 1, 30.130. Transfers or expenditures from the code compliance process shall be budgeted for and approved by the city council in accordance with the city's financial policies. If you've gotten over and over every year, and last year, we don't even know the full total.
30 seconds.
When any work, including but not limited to repair, demolition, or abatement, is done by the pursuant to this chapter, the city manager, under his or her standing reitability under this code, shall cause the work to be accomplished by city personnel or private contract. And these are more than $25,000. Any amount of the excess of the city's management signature authority shall be approved by the city council. Have you seen an amendment? A budget? No. This is a huge financial scandal, and I don't know how much longer, how much you're gonna go, $1 million? Because that's what it seems like. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no further hands on Zoom, Mayor Ford.
Okay, so we'll come to the chambers for citizen business and public comment for consent calendar items.
Yes, good evening, council. It seems like a change in recent plans with the new potential roundabout on Highway 116 could be an opportunity for an art piece. Now, I know it's a recent change in plans, but I certainly would like to float the idea that that space in the middle of the roundabout is an entry into Cattati. I don't know what the procedure is. It's obviously very complicated with Caltrans and all involved, but I certainly think it's worth highlighting that it's an opportunity that's there for something. I circulated some suggestions, just some humorous suggestions, but there's a lot of places that are doing art and roundabouts, including in other places in Sonoma. So I hope there's some process for considering it and bringing in the art skills in the way that Cattati has done in other places. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else in the chambers? Okay, we'll close citizen business and consent calendar comments. And I'm wondering, City Manager Obit, if you want to give a brief hotel update?
Yeah, so with regard to the Catati Hotel, they're, they are, the short version is they're still in the midst of financing the construction, getting all the loans in place. So that's the, that's the short version of a much longer explanation, but hopefully they'll get going soon.
Thank you. And the city has limited levers to, we don't build anything. So, okay. Thanks. We'll move on to the consent calendar at this point. Do any council members wish to pull any item? Oh, no, we're going to do public comment first. Public comment, no, we already did. All right. So any, any council members need to pull anything? Okay, is there a motion?
Move to approve the consent calendar. Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that carries 5-0. Do any council members have any direction on future agenda items? Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you, and I apologize that I haven't had a chance to speak with the city manager about this yet. Pretty small thing. I received a constituent request for us to send a letter in support of the polluters pay climate super fund legislation, SB 684, AB 1243.
Yeah, I brought that up last meeting, so it's in the queue.
Oh, okay, it's already in the queue. Never mind. Retracted.
Anybody else have anything? Okay, great. So we'll move on to the regular agenda. Item 8A, finalized design option for the Laguna de Santa Rosa Class 1 pathway maintenance project. And we'll start with a staff report.
Hello, my name is Henry Babbitts. I'm an engineering technician with the city of Catati. And we're presenting the Class 1 pathway maintenance project, the design options for the Laguna de Santa Rosa. Next slide. So the purpose of this project is to renew the existing paved pathway to provide a nice, smooth, all-weather surface. And it will also provide garbage cans at Gravenstein Way and Wilfrid Circle. In November, the council approved a design agreement to begin design of the trail and wanted staff to return with recommendations before finalizing the design. Next slide. So the Laguna de Santa Rosa pathway is a Class 1 multi-use path, which is just a path for bicycles and pedestrians that is fully separate from roadways. Interactions with vehicles are limited to just street crossings. And since there's not heavy vehicles on it, they don't wear down as quickly. It's about 2,200 feet, eight to 10 feet within the project zone. Next slide. So their existing pathway from Ladybug to East Catati Avenue is a natural material. Public work crews find that the pathway is holding up well. It was originally constructed of compact Class 2 road base, and it also experiences periodic flooding, and the water from that flooding deposits fines and silt, which has given it more of a compacted dirt appearance. Next slide. And the public work crews have found that it keeps a level surface and has required infrequent maintenance, and that maintenance primarily consists of weed cutting along the edges of the pathway. And the maintenance costs are typically limited to fixing the drainage and repairing erosion. Next slide. The Laguna de Santa Rosa Trail from East Catati Avenue to Gravenstein Way is an asphalt pathway. It is in need of repair, and portions of the asphalt are in poor condition due to soil expansion and contraction, tree roots, and these have resulted in cracks and uneven surfaces. Is generally not repairable by city crews and requires contracting to keep everything working and to get workers that have the special equipment to repair the asphalt. Next slide. The asphalt surface allows for higher speed vehicles, like bicycles and scooters. It has a more urban and developed feel, and it has a hotter surface temperature than a natural material. Next slide. So that section of East Catati, or sorry, that section of the Laguna Trail from East Catati to Gravenstein, is the part that we're going to be redoing. And so option one is an asphalt repair, which is, we are just going to keep the paved asphalt and resurface and crack seal and all of that, just so it becomes smooth again. Next slide. The second option would be to remove the asphalt and replace it with a natural pathway. This will require building up a rock base where necessary and installing a rock mixture on the surface level. In some areas, it might need metal borders where it has a steep slope down towards the creek. Next slide. Option three is a longitudinally split pathway, which would separate the bicyclists from the walkers. There's not really sufficient space to accommodate both trails for the entire portion of the trail. Typical multi-use trails are 14 feet, where 10 feet is paved, and then it has a shoulder on either side that are two feet each. And the existing pathway is eight to nine feet in width. And the nine-foot section does have some room to be widened, but it wouldn't continue for very long. So staff did not find this to be a viable option due to the limited width and the complexity of construction. Next slide. And then here is a simple cost comparison from a preliminary estimate. There have been additional considerations since these estimates were prepared. So these are just to compare in general the two options and will probably change. Next slide. So the staff recommendation for this project is to replace the asphalt with natural material. It is expected to have lower long-term maintenance costs as we will not need to hire specialty contractors to redo it. City crews will be able to do that maintenance themselves. It will already be, it won't need to be regraded. It can be ADA compliant, as is the existing natural pathway from Ladybug to East Catati. And it will create a more natural environment along the creek. And it will also keep the heat down as it will not be black asphalt. The material is not suited for road bikes and other vehicles when they go at high speeds, so cyclists would need to go slower. But given the narrow width of the pathway, it would probably benefit pedestrians if the bicyclists were going slower, but bicyclists might not like that one. The, this segment does not flood, so it won't fill in with that silt. And so it'll have more of a aggregate surface appearance than the compacted dirt that it has on the other section of the trail. There are trails around that don't flood that have the natural material. I know there's one in Petaluma along Washington Creek, and that, it has sections that don't flood, and they still work. They just don't get that dirt appearance. And again, all options are going to put a trash, the trash cans at Gravenstein and Wilfrid Circle. Thank you.
I was just going to add, following direction by council tonight, the next step is to, for staff to manage the design and bidding of the project and come back with, for consideration of award of the construction contract. So at this time, we're open to answer your questions. Thanks.
Questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Harvey?
You said that the pavement pathway, some of it's deteriorated because of tree roots. If we go to a natural pathway, how do we manage the tree roots with that? Just trying to think ahead here.
Yeah, when you said, when we saw, we mentioned up there that the construction class estimates are preliminary. Some of the additional efforts would be to put in root barriers at those locations to, so the roots don't continue to go there and degrade the pathway.
Okay, and you're saying if we went with option one, we wouldn't put the barriers in? Is that what you're saying?
I think it's, sorry to just jump in. I think it's just, I think it's just easily, more easily maintainable as a, as a natural aggregate.
Right.
Because if it, if it does start bumping up from a tree root, it can just be regraded.
Okay.
If the tree root gets so high up that it actually starts daylighting, then you have to cut it off. So it'd still have the same tree root, I think, the tree root barrier treatment, except that when asphalt gets buckled, it, I mean, it's, it's a bigger repair than, than just regrading the aggregate material. That's the thought.
And it sounds like that's something that public works could take care of if that happens.
With our equipment, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. Couple of questions. What would they, what exactly, can you just help me picture what the aggregate would look like without the fines and silt on it? Be more kind of like a rocky surface? Or how would it, trying to visualize?
Yeah, it would probably be closer to more of a gravel aggregate pathway than the dirt.
Just kind of packed down gravel, basically?
Yeah.
Okay. And then another question is, a lot of that narrow segment, there was a chain link fence, like abutting the path right there. So will that fence have to come down for both of these options or either of them? And is there any thought to replacing the fence? Or how would that work?
Well, the fence immediately south of Gravenstein Way, you've got that fence there. And it's because the, as opposed to the south, south parts of the Laguna, there's a steep drop off there. It's not, you don't really notice it. It's not obvious because of all the vegetation, but it's right there, and it's almost an overhang in parts with the erosion that's happening. So that fence would stay, and we would just see what we can do in that stretch of path. That's a challenging section because there's retaining walls for the homes right there, and some of the home's drainage goes across the path. And, and walking there, some of us have noticed that there's erosion on the other side of the path. We're like, what's that coming from? Oh, it's from like the water coming across the path and, you know, undermining it there. So we would have to spend special attention at those areas to make sure that that would be addressed and wouldn't continue to be a problem.
Thank you. And then last question, do we have a sense of when the neck, the other segment from Gravenstein Way to the city limits north would be looked at for upkeep?
I think that would be part of the CIP process, and we would take lessons learned from here and then look at our budget to see what we, what we could manage. Yeah, and then definitely coming off of this project, we would say, oh, yeah, let's do that natural pave and continue it out. Or, you know, I think we would have to see at that point.
Okay, thank you.
I had a similar question just about the looseness of the surface. And being a bike rider, I'm just curious. Also, are we talking road base like the south one? Or is there, or is there a aggregate that's specifically designed for pathways like that? Because aggregate, I think, is typically broken rock, right? That locks together pretty well, and it's sharp.
Yeah, so this would be a little bit of a learning experience for us. And from what I've read, there, there's a combination between three eighths of an inch gravel, all the way to one sixteenths. And it's, it's a gradation of those, everything in between. And the ability or the way it's applied makes a big difference from what I've read, where it's, it, there's a, the composition of each and then compacting it. Because if it's not compacted right, then the larger gravel would rise to the surface. The fines would sink to the bottom, and you don't want, you want to prevent that from happening because that would lead to a rougher surface, and you want to keep that nice, smooth surface. So that's, we're going to have to give a lot of attention to how it's installed.
Great, thanks. Any more questions? Councilmember Harvey?
If we switch to the natural, it sounds like it might impact bicyclists. Do we have any sense for whether we have more people walking on that path or riding bicycles on there? Do we have any kind of information at all?
This past year, when we put the safety measures on Benson Lane, we asked the consultant to take a bicycle and pedestrian count at Benson Lane. I know that's not the area we're talking about, but on a given day, there was 125 bikes, pedestrians using that. And there's a breakdown of what hours, there's like a rush hour when, when a lot of, there's, there's, most of them come between this one hour, two hour period in the morning and then the afternoon. So I'm trying to remember what it, you know, what provided for. But we could make that available later. I don't have that with me right now. I don't remember.
My only concern would be is if we're talking about changing it to a natural, and the natural impacts the bicyclists, and we have mostly bicyclists using that section. I don't want to, I'm concerned about doing something that will impact the majority of the people.
I would just say when, when I was walking the trail with Jenny and Maria, who was predominantly pedestrians. I mean, we were in the middle of the day, granted. But there were strollers, dog walkers, pretty much 90% at that time. It's not very scientific, but.
Yeah, that's my unscientific, when I've walked there, it seems to be mostly people walking, but I didn't know if we had any data. Thank you.
Where's Mary Lemos?
Yeah, I just have a question. I know we don't have an RFP for it yet, but once we do, do we have a timeline? Like, how long it takes for the project? Is it six months, three months, less?
Well, it's a, it's a dry weather project. So we've got the winter to design it, which would be ample time, and we would come out with bidding in early spring. So by April, May, we could see construction.
But I wouldn't think the construction would take more than a couple of months. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but that seems pretty generous, a couple of months.
A couple of months, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, any more questions? Councilmember Sparks.
Sorry, one more. If we go with the asphalt option, there are a lot of companies that know how to do that. But it sounds like it's going to be really important to get a company that's experienced with these types of pathways because the application is so essential to how it's going to turn out. So when we go to, go out for bids, I know this is way down the road, but I don't think it hurts to start thinking about it now. Is there a way that we could, if we were to go with the natural pathway, could we write the requirements a little more stringent that somebody needs to have demonstrated experience with these specific, whatever specific solution we're using and good results?
Yes, that's, that's part of our standard contract is to have the bidders provide five years worth, or at least five projects rather, of similar scope and type. And so in the past, it's always been, oh, road construction with asphalt and so forth. But in this case, we would make that definitely reflect, you know, projects of this type with the natural pavement. And I would, just thinking out loud, I think the staff would, might go out there and check those locations out to see if they're holding up pretty well.
Great. Okay, I'm going to open public comments on this item. We'll start in the room. Anybody wishing to make public comment on the pathway choice? Go ahead.
Jenny Blake at Arthur Street. First of all, I'd like to say thank you. Thank you very much for considering and discussing the different options because I remember when this first came up, it was going to be default, just replacing the asphalt. And also, thank you for the garbage cans. That will be very welcome. I, I do, it's, it's interesting how the part that's south of East Catati Avenue, tree roots isn't a problem. There's so many trees there, and yet the roots don't come up. And they're very infrequently any gopher holes or anything in the path. Whereas the old asphalt north of East Catati, which is where we live, it's all broken up and rutted, and there's roots coming through. And I've heard of at least three or four people who've had quite serious falls. I haven't witnessed it, but I've heard about it. I haven't heard of any falls on the other part. I haven't witnessed it, but I've heard about it. I haven't heard of any falls on the other part. And I hear that it might not be as easy for cyclists, but right now there's so many bumps and ruts that cyclists have to go slowly. And it's a good thing that cyclists have to go slowly because so many different kinds of people use the path. I think there are probably more cyclists on this section than the other section. But there's cyclists and walkers and kids and skateboards and all sorts of people going at different speeds. So I think it's good if they have to slow down. Anyway, just my, my, I'm in favor of the natural surface, but I hear that what you say makes a lot of sense about trying to get people who have really good experience and a track record of working with it well. But thank you for reconsidering this.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Yes, good evening, Councilman Neil Hancock. So I live on that bike path and use it an awful lot. I definitely am, as a cyclist, try to be aware of that I can go too fast. I mean, I think as in some of the narrow areas, it's actually a concern. It's built to speed down it and we've had occasional motorcycles go down there as well. There's one particular blind curve that there could be some nasty collisions if somebody isn't paying a lot of attention. So I do think we want to support a design that keeps the speed within a reasonable framework. And I mean, that's the whole aspect of the way we're talking about people mixing. When you have cyclists and you have walkers in those areas, it really needs to be designed so that there can't be speeding cyclists or motorcyclists down there. Or we're getting into whole new forms of types of scooters and that type of thing. So I do favor from a safety point of view that we have a design that the, the motorized vehicles will keep a reasonably safe approach. I think from the healing, from the, from a surface healing point of view, we see that the, the path that's to the south of East Kattati Avenue healed very nicely. There's the portion just south of East Kattati Avenue that does flood and that has worked out pretty well. There's the portion that's north, that's again, south of Benson Lane that doesn't flood. And I think that has behaved very well. So however that technology was put together, I think is, is a really good sign. So I, I would support that we look at safety, look at the actual, the maintenance, long-term maintenance of that. And the, the aspect of the natural surface being something that is also better for a local walking, I think will be good. I do see a lot of people out there. It's really quite fun to hear people who go down the creek, who stop for picking the, the plums down there. Who are both exercising, fast walking, fast running, and also going down in groups, just enjoying it. So I think it has a combination. For anybody who is a fast cyclist, they're probably going to be content to stick to the roads. Because that's a very quick area that bypasses through that area. So I think we should really focus on the practicing side, the low speed cyclists, the safe cyclists, how to get somewhere for kids to be safe down there. But yeah, I hope you look forward to the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I'll close public comment. Back to council for discussion. Oh, I skipped Zoom. I thought I started with them. Thank you. Reopening public comment. We'll go to Zoom.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Once again, Zoom attendees, please use the raise hand icon to make a public comment. The first hand is from Lori Alderman. You have the floor.
Hi, you're forgetting people with disabilities. There's other people than bicyclists and walkers. We with disabilities love asphalt. Rocks and uneven surfaces cause falls. Like with my walker, I, I, I can't go on grass and stuff like that. Yeah, it's up at Santa Rosa J C, just to demonstrate this. About two years ago, they put in a natural trail. And I could get my walker over it, but a person with a motorized wheelchair could not. You need to consider not only the width and depth, but what kind of materials. On Clifford Street, we had, for many years, we had a cutaway for disabled ramp that went to rocks. So nobody used it. It's been corrected now. But that's the kind of engineering you have. You have to think of ADA, not just by width and all that, what kind of surfaces and all that. Thank you.
And there are no further hands on Zoom, Mayor Ford. Thank you.
Okay, thanks all. Now I will close public comment. Back to the council for discussion. Oh, did you, actually, I just want to ask for a little clarity. Can you comment on the, the ADA issues with the, the recommended treatment?
Yeah, the ADA recommendation for natural pathways has a pretty clear guideline on you can't have any surface where it will leave an impression if a wheel or a foot or any weather wetens it. You don't want anything to leave grooves or divots, so it has to be compacted adequately. So it would be like the existing side where there's not rocks that are large or in the way. And it doesn't deform when wheels go over it. And that is up to what the ADA standard lists.
Great, thanks. Okay, discussion on the two options. Councilmember Harvey?
Yeah, I know it costs a little bit more up, upfront. But I think the natural seems more like Kattati. One of the things, and again, it's anecdotal, and that's why I asked if we had any data. What I'm seeing as I go back and forth between Runner Park in here a lot is it seems like a lot of the bicyclists have switched to the smart train path. I see much more at a lot of the crossings. So that gives me a little bit of ease in knowing that they have a, a faster option if they want it. I think as you've pointed out too, some folks are just generally more comfortable driving in traffic. I, I do think that it'll also make the area a little bit cooler. The asphalt tends to be, you know, pretty hot. I am concerned that all levels of people, whatever it is that we end up choosing, that we are able to make sure that they can move on that, be that wheelchairs, scooters, kids on little bicycles, you know, the whole, the whole nine yards. So I am comfortable with moving to a natural material. And I agree with Councilmember Sparks. I think we have to make sure that whatever contractor we get really has good experience in that because we don't want to have to redo it again. But I'm comfortable with the recommendation.
Great, thanks. Councilmember Sparks.
I've also leaned towards going with the natural material. I've, I've been walking up and down that path a bit, leading up to this. And I, again, it's just anecdotal, but the bicycles that I saw tended to be more, had kind of big chunky tires anyway. I didn't, I didn't really see road bikes on there. And I mostly saw people going pretty slow on their bicycles. So it maybe at a different time of day, there might be more fast bikes, but I, I haven't really seen any. So I would feel comfortable with moving to the natural material.
Thank you. Any comments down here?
The thing I like most about the natural material is the safety aspects. I think the root intrusion you have now on the asphalt and the unevenness of the asphalt is, is a real safety concern. And then the fact that it would be likely to reduce speed with a natural, I think that's another good, good point. And then secondly, I think as long as we understand the ADA compliance with the natural surface, that that would be the other key thing. And it sounds like that's something that we'll be able to do.
I also agree. I agree with more natural one. And I'm glad that we're looking at the ADA aspects of it. And I know that walking down that trail, there are some narrow spots. So I think that it would be good to have, have it safer for the, so bicycles will slow down and make it safer for the pedestrians and everyone on there. So I agree with the more natural one too.
Great. Yeah, I'm basically in agreement. I'm a little torn because I do use that to commute. And I, I wouldn't, if it was a wet day, there's no way I would ride my, you know, even though I have fairly wide tires, I'm not going to get muddy going up that just to get up to grocery outlet or Safeway or something like that. I, I think the natural material will help a bit with an emerging problem on bike paths, which is e-bikes that go way too fast for bike paths, including a lot that are, that are technically electric motorcycles, but people are out there selling them and buying them as e-bikes. And so I'm, I'm all for the slowing down aspect of the path. And as much as I like nice, smooth, new asphalt paths, they don't stay that way. And if you, when I do commute like up to the Safeway Shopping Center or something like that, it's, it's, when you get to the Runner Park sections, then you're again on a bucking bronco. So, and, and they're not nearly as old as ours. So I think I'm, if, if, if it can stay in good shape like the one in the south and not be a loose gravel, which I trust the ADA would make sure, ADA requirements would make sure it's not a loose gravel kind of pathway. Then I'm, I'm comfortable with the, the staff recommendation. So do you have the direction you need?
We do, and I've, I've got the stats. I found them if you're interested. It's 95% pedestrians. There was a 10-hour period on a Thursday in February, there was 125 pedestrians and seven cyclists.
This was the?
Across the crosswalk at Benson.
Ah, right. Which is the one that's currently not paved. So sort of to the point, bicyclists don't use that. But it's also, there, there are good residential streets paralleling the path there. And there aren't for this new section. So that is an issue for me. Like there's, there's no good way except riding down Old Red, which is not fun. So.
We have a direction. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Anything else? Okay. So that brings us to the land acknowledgement and pledge of allegiance. And I invite you to stand and join me if you wish. I don't have my usual handheld, so I'm going to speak really loudly. We begin with the land acknowledgement. The city of Kattati recognizes that we're on the ancestral lands of the Coast Miwok, who are the original caretakers of this area. We respectfully acknowledge the indigenous peoples who have been stewarding and maintaining a relationship on this land as knowledge keepers for millennia. This acknowledgement does not take the place of authentic relationships with indigenous communities, but serves as a gesture of respect to the land we are on. And now the pledge of allegiance. Thank you all. And that takes us to the city manager's report and council member reports.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So as you probably have witnessed, if you've been out there, Putnam Park is progressing quite a bit faster these days with the DG pathways, park benches, landscaping, all going in. The fencing was continuing today and we're hoping that it'll be substantially complete by the end of this month. Sunflower Park is also moving very quickly. So if you've been out there recently, you've seen that all the pathways are formed up. Part of the playground is formed up. They're out there pumping concrete today. They're starting today pumping concrete. So they're moving quickly out there. We do have, as you might recall, there was a event that came to council for some approvals, it was the running fence event. And this was, this was supposed to be a run event. But the organizer, the event organizer was unable to get the necessary encroachment permits from the county. But they do still plan on having an art event in the park with music and food trucks. And they're doing a virtual fun run this year. And they're using the opportunity to promote the marathon for 2026. So it's a silver lining, even though they weren't able to get the permits from the county in time. Also, also this Saturday, we have the Kattati Housing and Resource Fair. And it's, it's a joint event with the city of Runner Park. We do it at the Runner Park Kattati Library. And this year's focus is on resources and education for first time home buyers. And we'll include a moderated panel discussion, including local lenders, housing provider and housing providers to discuss expectations for future home buyers in our community and in the future. The, the city has also set the date for our second annual climate ready Kattati Fair. So that's going to be March 28th, 2026 at the Kattati Depot. So same place as last year. And our community development staff is building on the success of this year's fair and hope to make it the second, the second fair, even a bigger success than the last. So if you, we'll save the date and you can follow the community development department's sustainability newsletter or check the website for more details as we get closer. The planning commission is hosting a workshop at their September 15th meeting to consider the transit oriented community policy compliance. So this is largely about the area surrounding the smart station. So Santara Way, also East Kattati Avenue down to Laguna Creek. And this same workshop will also come to the city council, scheduled to come to the city council on September 23rd. So after, after both workshops at planning commission and council, staff will get direction on how, ultimately how the council wants to go with the various policy decisions around the transit oriented communities. And then we'll be coming back with an ordinance based on that direction. And our goal here is full compliance with transit oriented communities. And, and the, one of the, one of the benefits of that is that it would make Kattati very competitive for the Obag Four transportation funding that's coming up. That's one of the criteria is compliance with T O C policies. So I think the more compliant we are, the better we will score in those grant funding. And, and the grant funding for primarily transit fund, transportation funds. We also have the cultural grant program again. So that pilot that we did last year, it's open now again for the next year. And it closes on December 5th. So if anyone's interested in, in cultural grant or vents in our parks, they should look on our website now because they can put in an application until December 5th. Next Saturday, sorry, this data is wrong. But we have a little later this month, September 20th, we have our second annual grub in the hub food festival in La Plaza Park from three to seven, followed by a movie in the park where we're showing Ratatouille. So it has to be a food themed movie. So from three to seven, we have food vendors and a lot of other fun things to do. We have some bands playing. It's 2000's music. I'm not sure exactly what that means, but I guess that means classic rock now. That's what it sounds like when you put that station on. All are welcome to attend this free event and should be a lot of fun. That same day, as we talked a little bit about earlier tonight, we have our annual Creek Week Cleanup Day on Laguna de Santa Rosa Trail from 10 to noon. We have a staff stationed at Gravenstein Way, Benson Lane and Pocahontas Park to provide materials to help clean up the creek trail. And we're also working with, I mean, I didn't catch the name. I wrote it down somewhere, but anyway. Exactly. For, to, to host volunteers for invasive species removal at that same, same time of day. September 30th, we're starting a new functionally fit strength and balance class designed for those 55 and up. And the class will focus on balanced work, full body conditioning, coordination and functional movements of daily life. And that's on Tuesdays from 11 to noon. And then finally, we're also continuing this month and through the fall, our free memoir writing class, free storytelling class, free Zumba Gold class, all offered through our partnership with Santa Rosa J C. And we have two other Zumba Gold classes, Akido, children's theater programs and school enrichment classes at the Veranda Fleety Ranch. And we have, just a little bit further on the horizon, we have the Fall Festival coming up at the ranch. And also Kattati Candyland during Halloween. So you can find out more about all these events online or on social media. But I'll leave it there. We'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for the city manager? Okay, let's do council member reports and council member Savage, I'm going to start at your end this time.
The only thing I attended was the art show at State Art Gallery that Recology did with reclaimed tracts. They had, I believe, five students. And there's more shows going on throughout this rest of the month.
Okay, on August 28th, I went to the North Bay Cal City's general meeting. It was at Vallejo at the Cal Poly Maritime Academy. And we heard about the Ships Act from Congressman John Guaramendi, who was there. And the Ships for America Act 2025 is connected to maritime education and potential economic and security growth and development in the region. If the act passes, it would give us a tool to rebuild our commercial maritime industry in the Bay Area. And something I found out is that with 10% fund increase, commercial vehicles, commercial ships can be modified to military if needed. vehicles, commercial ships can be modified to military if needed. It's going to provide local building, upgrade to port facilities and more. There are six facilities in the nation where maritime industry are trained and Cal Poly Solano is the one on the West Coast. So if anyone knows any youth looking for a career, Cal Poly Solano's four year degree offers engineering degree and students also graduate as an officer in the U S Navy. And then they also receive guaranteed job offers with firms like Johnson Controls, Simons and and those type of companies. I learned that that's that it's really important for our security in our region, the Pacific, since if there was a serious conflict, we would not be able to secure the Pacific beyond thirty to fifty days. The act's passage and timeline is really questionable because of the instability in D C right now. So let's hope that that moves forward in the not too distant future. This last Saturday, I was invited to present a Losian Bridge Program. The bridge program helps to develop new leaders around diversity, equity and inclusion. And so I was a panelist to that share wisdom, knowledge and experience as community leader. And some of the key learnings about being a leader, significant challenges and discussing strategies and tactics to help navigate board experience. So that was a really good day Saturday that we did that. That's why I have, thank you.
Great, thank you. The only, the only formal thing I had was the art opening that council member Savage mentioned. And I will just point out that the artists and residents who led the experience is also a Khatari resident. We'll move on.
Yesterday was the S E S C T C A meeting. I'm going to take a while to to get used to the new name. They, we went and approved the first of the programs for the funding for cycle two. I know Craig's been pretty involved in in a lot of that. So that is moving forward and moving up the chain as it has to go. We also had a presentation on the Safe Roots to School Program and what they've done for twenty four and twenty five. And lastly, we had a interesting presentation on Equitable Building Electrification Action Plan. And it was about moving things, you know, more electrifying everything. And it was kind of interesting because they had like pretty lofty policy goals and residents' goals and things like that. And it got us into a huge discussion about that and it became a little contentious because there was things in there that it looked like they were dictating what, you know, we needed to do and stuff like that. And it was brought up things like they have things in there for low income folks, but what about middle income folks? They they even said that there, something as simple as as changing out your water heater. Someone that was there said that it's a seventeen thousand dollar project if you move to some of these alternate things. So there was discussion about, you know, yes, we need to do it, but we need to do it in a way in which people can afford. And they talked about solar and solar. They only want you to go if you have the batteries, but then you're oftentimes talking in six figures. So there was a lot of discussion around that. And and it finally came down to, after all of this discussion, that this report was really aspirational and that they acknowledged that it's going to take us a while to get there, but here's kind of where we want to go. And then that kind of made made people feel a little bit better because it, the way the report came out, it sounded like, you know, this is something we got to do next year. And that was not their intent. So it was very interesting. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Was there any information received after the agenda was posted?
Yes, there were two public comments received. Both were posted to the HTML agenda and are available here in print in the chamber tonight. Thank you.
Great. And with that, we're adjourned at seven fourteen.